Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners meeting, work session meeting, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. First up, Roscommon Sheriff's Office award presentation, Sheriff Ed Stern and Lieutenant Lori Beck. Take it away.
Good morning. I know you've got a packed agenda this morning for the work session, so I'll try to make it brief as possible. But I've got a couple of different things that we want to recognize for our department. First off is Deputy Aaron, what everybody knows him as A.J. Palmerton. A.J. served with our department for twenty-four years. He started in May of nineteen ninety-eight as a corrections deputy. Looked his way through the police academy while still working in the jail, became a road patrol officer in November of two thousand. He has since decided to retire in good standing and pursue a career field in U.S. Air Force full-time, which he was in prior to starting with us. So we want to recognize all his accomplishments and his twenty-four years of service with the sheriff's office. Jay, if I can have you come on real quick. His certificate reads Deputy A.J. Palmerton, for his twenty-four years of faithful service with the Roscommon County Sheriff's Office. Thank you for your many years of service. Roscommon County Sheriff's Office wishes you well in your retirement. It's your endeavor.
A.J., you're retiring. And how long have you and I known each other?
Quite a few years.
Quite a few years, and you're retiring. Either I'm young or you're old. I don't know which. I have, yes, I have more. I do have more hair than he does. Well, A.J., congratulations and good luck on your next endeavor. All right. And also, since we've got so many people here from law enforcement, I think from the board, it's appropriate that we thank you for everything that you do. And I know July has been nuts. We'll get through it. The next thing you know, school year will be here and will be in September. So thank you for everything that you do and all the situations that you have to deal with every day. It's just unimaginable to me. So thank you very much, all law enforcement. Thank you. I refer you by name. I know some of you, but I don't know all of you. So, all right. Thank you. Got something else, Sheriff?
I do.
Oh, boy.
So, as you all know, operating in jail can be a very stressful situation. It's a stressful environment. We don't deal with people in our facility that are always in the right state of mind, or they come to us with many medical issues. And it's very difficult to operate a jail and avoid tragedy. It's some things are unforeseen, some things are unknown, and we do the best that we can to avoid any tragedy that may happen inside the jail. On November twenty-fourth, we had an incident in the jail where an inmate attempted to commit suicide by hanging themselves using a bed sheet in one of our jail cells. If it wasn't for the quick action and responses of the corrections deputies that were working that day, we would have had a tragedy and a loss of life in the jail. I'll give you a little breakdown on it real quick. Just around noon, actually right about twelve, twelve o'clock, an inmate attempted to hang themselves by suspending himself off of one of the TV stands in the cell, using the bed sheet that was given to him for normal, for bed, obviously. At twelve oh three, as corrections deputies were passing meals, they immediately noticed that the inmate was suspended off of the ground. They jumped into action and were able to resuscitate the inmate and get him medical treatment and shipped off to a hospital. Initially, the incident by the medical staff did not look good, but within two days, he was off of a ventilator and back breathing on his own, receiving both medical and mental health treatment, and he is currently back in our facility at the moment. So where there would have been a loss of life, if it wasn't for the quick response of the corrections deputies, we would have had a loss of life. So I'd like to recognize four of our correction staff that were on that incident that day. Deputy Cody Spooner, Deputy Zach Max, Corporal Rob Holiday, and Sergeant Nate. I'll just read this real quick. Roscommon County Office Sheriff's Mysterious Conduct Commendation. This is certified that the Roscommon County Sheriff's Office has awarded, I'll use this one, Life Saving Medal, the Corporal Rob Holiday, in recognition of your acts of service on November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, in immediate response to a male inmate attempting suicide by hanging in his cell. Your actions led to this inmate's resuscitation and full recovery. You saved a life that could never have been replaced. Rapid response and effective life-saving measures avoided significant tragedy within the Roscommon County Jail. We'll start with Corporal Holiday. Deputy Cody Spooner. Sergeant Nate Spencer. Are you guys in line by the way the lights are? And Deputy Zach. It said if it wasn't for these four officers and their quick response, we would have had a tragedy in our jail. They were able to perform CPR, hook up the AED, and get the person back to breathing before EMS even made it on scene. Or the inmate wasn't breathing when they first found him. I just want to, A, congratulate you, B, I want to thank you for your service. As an administrator and as the sheriff that oversees that operation, I sleep better at night knowing that you guys are trained well, ready to respond sympathetic to the needs of the inmates in our county jail. So thank you.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Step up to the corner.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Hey, I know. I don't know who's staying. Obviously, with our next is our audit. Right. I'll give you a couple, just thirty seconds to get out if you don't want to stay for our audit presentation. Although I anticipate it's going to be okay. Thank you, everybody. Okay, item number two, twenty twenty-one audit presentation, James Anderson and Tyler. Tyler, your last name, I? Waters? Okay.
Tyler's started working with me my, uh, this last April first. Clear engagements last couple of years.
All right. Okay. So to get started, let's just maybe hit the table content so you can see what's in here. You have a hundred and, I think it's a hundred and forty pages or something like that, or a hundred and four. Yeah. So if table contents, if you look on that first section, it's the auditor's report, which is my opinion letter, then followed by the management discussion analysis, which is the really management, which would be in your case controller's perspective and your perspective on the audit. And then the basic financial statements that runs through page twenty-eight and then pages twenty-nine through fifty-eight are the notes to the financial statements, which have supporting documentation for the numbers that are in the audit report. And then page is fifty-nine, all the way back to probably hundred and one are individual financial statements and schedules that again support the numbers upfront. So if you want to find an individual fund information, you would go to the back of the report and look for that fund either as a non-major or major fund. It'll be in there in detail. And then if you want a comprehensive viewpoint of the audit, that's upfront. But it's kind of the details in the back and the general stuff's upfront. Let's go to the opinion letter. The, the letter itself has changed. It's been the same for probably fifteen years. And they made a change. From an accountant's standpoint, this is a big deal, but the one thing I do like about this is that it used to be you had to read all the way through the third page before you found out what my opinion was. And the way they rewritten, written it is the opinion is right upfront. First two paragraphs basically states that we did the audit as of December thirty-first. And the second paragraph states my opinion that I believe the numbers are materially correct as of that date. And so then it goes on to talk about the basis for the opinion. The letter has gotten longer and the, the attributes that are in it are basically the same, except I would point out in page two, when it talks about auditor's responsibilities, they got very specific in there about what I'm supposed to be doing as part of the audit, which is exercise professional judgment, identify, assess risk, obtain understanding of the internal controls, evaluate the appropriateness of your accounting policies that you've applied. And then the last one is very specific that whether I believe you're going to be here in a year. Yeah. And believe it or not, there are some entities that you, I've had to make that decision whether to say that or not. Not in the case today. So anyways, the opinion is an unmodified opinion, which means I believe the numbers are materially correct. There is no exceptions in there. And if there were, they, they'd state that. So let's go back to page sixty-six, which is the general fund, uh, Allen Sheet. And basically you have a snapshot of where you were at financially on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one compared to two thousand twenty. The if you look at the total assets, you're at one million eight hundred twenty-nine thousand, almost thirty in, in total assets compared to the prior year of a million six. The big difference is the cash. Your cash is up about two hundred twenty-eight thousand from the prior year. Uh, liabilities are three hundred sixty-five thousand, almost three sixty-six rounded compared to the prior year of two sixty-two. That's up about a hundred and four thousand. And your liabilities pretty much are bills that were paid in January, February that were for services or products that you got in December. And it also has the accrued liabilities, which is your payroll, because you, several years ago, you started accruing payroll. So if the pay was, let's say, in the first week of January, and part of that was from December, Jody is making an accrual entry to push that back into the proper year. So you get good, solid reporting. It's a true cost for each year. So the difference between the assets and the liabilities, the million eight twenty-nine to the three hundred sixty-five thousand brings you down to the fund balance, which is that second number from the bottom. And that's a million four sixty-three, eight, eight-three. So your fund balance, if you compare it to the number to the right, is up just about ninety-nine thousand dollars from what was the year before. So, but when you look at a budget of eight million dollars, that's pretty close to break even. And we're going to talk about what you had budgeted. But so it wasn't, it wasn't a substantial increase, but it wasn't a decrease, which is, you know, in today's world, that's a good thing when you're, you know, with government. So if, if you go to the second page, there were one after that, page sixty-seven, the, this is a summarized statement of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balance. And if you want detail on each of these lines, you'll find that further back in the audit. But this gives you a good bird's eye view of what happened. And if you look at that first subtotal, you'll see, you'll, well, the first column is original budget, final budget, then actual, and then the variance. So if you look down that third column, you'll see that the total revenues in the general fund was nine million three hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars. You budgeted nine point two at the beginning of the year and amended it to nine point four. So you're off about a hundred thousand dollars on nine million dollars. The, the main differences between the two years is that your, your tax revenue went up about two point four percent. So you had a slight increase in the total tax revenue. Federal revenue went down substantially, about five hundred sixty-nine thousand. And that's because all the COVID money that you got in the prior year, you didn't get as much in the current year. State revenue is up about a hundred and three thousand dollars. So when you net all that out, you, your revenue is within twenty-two hundred dollars of what it was the year before. Almost no change. Total expenditures for operations, and this is just general fund, was eight, eight million eight, uh, four hundred forty-four thousand dollars. Again, uh, that's within three hundred thirty-eight thousand of what you amended budget was, which is around four percent difference from what you anticipated, but to the good. And a big difference between that and the prior year, your, your revenue or total expenditures are down about eighty-seven thousand dollars. Big difference is that judicial was up a little bit, general fund was down, or general operations is down about a hundred twenty-seven thousand, and public safety was up a hundred fifteen, which is basically two areas, which in the sheriff's department was a little higher, and marine was. But marines driven mostly by grants, so they had more grants to offset that. The difference between the revenues and expenditures, the nine million three and the eight point four brings you down to an excess of nine million, or nine hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. Then the next section is your other financing sources and uses, which are transfers in and out, which the general fund normally gets some subsidy from the tax payment fund and occasionally from some of the other funds, but the majority of it comes from the tax payment fund. The transfers out was a million two fifty-eight. Then the detail of what that is is further back in the audit, but that's down about four hundred seventy-two thousand. As far as what you transferred out and your transfer in is down about nine hundred and sixty-five thousand. So you transferred a lot less in from the general tax payment fund in two thousand one than you did the prior year. You were dealing with COVID and you were dealing with, you know, subsidizing some of these other funds in a greater amount in those last year to, to keep them afloat. And so the net from the transfers in and out is a negative eight hundred thirteen thousand dollars. And so that compared to the operational nine hundred and twelve surplus, you came down to the net increase in the fund balance of ninety-eight thousand eight fifty-eight, which brought your fund balance up to the million four sixty-three. Now, you have a, a policy that you establish as a board that you wanted to keep your fund balance at a minimum of fifteen percent. And you fell below that in prior years. This year, you're at seventeen percent. That's one percent higher than it was last year. So you have stayed above the fifteen and you, which was your target, and you've also increased it by one percent. And I guess one thing I want to point out, when I look at the original budget and the final budget, so I know what you started with, what you thought, and what you had amended, and then what you actually had, you did a really, really good job with your foresight at the beginning of the year. And I, I don't know if I should give you guys credit if I give that to Jody, but it's probably Jody. But when I look at that and I see that they did not make huge changes in the budget during the year, and that your original budget really came pretty close to the mark, that's pretty good, considering all the things that have happened this last year. So I, I would say your budgeting process is working and, and your foresight was spot on as far as for this last year and for this fund. But, and this is what the majority of the money runs through in your county. You have all these special funds, but this is your basic operational fund. One other thing I did notice too, and we, we, we did meet with Ken and Bob and some of your, Jody and Park Treasurer and Sheriff Stern as the accident interview before I came here. So some of this stuff is repetitive. But one thing I always point out, you know, the jail is a huge part of the general fund. And it's one point, off the top of my head, it's like one point five million dollars in total expenditures. This last year, you took in more revenue and managed to keep the expenditures at about the same level. So the subsidy from the general fund to keep that afloat was less than what it was. And there's a schedule on page twelve, a graph, and I'm not going to go through that. But you can see, we had this graph last year, and you could see the trend. And you managed to hedge off having a greater expense in there. And again, that's partly because you took in more revenues from other sources. And, you know, there's an age-old issue with the jail. Now, is it worth it? Is it worth it? I would, and you could argue that both ways. But having a jail right now is much better than having, not having a jail, depending on whether you think sending your prisoners somewhere else is a good idea and, and the cost of transportation, all that. And I know you've done some studies and looked at that to see. But at this point, it is here. It took, it took in more money and it was able to end off the inflationary costs that you've had in other areas.
Jim, can I add a caveat to that?
Sure.
So one of the things that I want to make sure that the Board of Commissioners realize about that is that is, that steady revenue flow comes from the federal inmates that they bring in, but be appreciative of the fact that adding federal inmates to a county jail brings its own set of unique challenges. Is that fair to say? So.
Repeat what you said about the jail in a positive way, because they have made some real strides and they have been working really hard on expenses. I do
They have.
know that Lieutenant Beck and her staff and Nate work really hard. And I do appreciate, far as I'm concerned, been on finance a long time. I appreciate the effort that they put into it. Sometimes you put an effort into it and you don't get any results, but they're putting some effort in and they're getting results.
As the auditor, my job is to point out negatives, not, I don't do a lot of hats on the back. So when I do give you one, it's, it's rare.
Why I wanted, I wanted to make sure we got that out there.
Last year, when we did the audit in two thousand twenty, we spent a full day in their, in the sheriff's department and the jail analyzing the procedures. We did a way of step up of a normal audit and just documented everything to look at how they do things and how they might be able to do it better. And they have made improvements. You're, you're, not that, it wasn't my decision taking federal inmates or anything like that. You did what you had to do to raise more money. It's, it's, it's a business. I know this is a governmental entity, but you have to have a business mind when you're looking at that. Otherwise, you're, you're just going to spend money. And jails are, jails are tough, tough business. You know, if you look at Oldsmobile County, they've got a jail, they were, they were putting inmates in there for, you know, I think at one point, twenty-five, thirty bucks a day, they were losing money. But they were just doing it to churn money to get more people in there. And I think that's going to start leveling off with, with everybody. But your commissary fund, I actually did pretty decent too. It's, it's been growing and you've got money in there that they want to use that. It's got to be used for jail purposes, but in the past, you've used it to buy a transport van. And you have that amount of money in there now to be able to do that if you choose to do that. So, no, they, they've made big improvements from where they were. I can say is you got to keep hammering that, because it's, it's, this is, we're going to, we're going into a really difficult time to predict cost and, and revenues because of our economy. And we have a war going across in Ukraine and, and it's affecting us and our, our, what our federal people are doing as far as decision makings about whether we buy oil, don't buy oil, or we go, whatever is, is, every time they do that, it's affecting the cost of how you operate at this level. Speaking of federal money, if you go to page seventy-four, and I just touched it on this because money, you know, you got the COVID money started, you know, as a to get you through the tough time when COVID, all the shutdown, everything, and, and more of it from emergency need, need your reaction. The ARPA money was a little bit more thoughtful. They, this was a plan to put money back in the economy of the local units and the state to shore up some of the lost businesses or whatever it may have affected you at an individual level. Your county took in two point three million dollars last year in ARPA money. This, this money has been confusing to deal with because they've changed the rules and they're, how they were going to manage it at least three, four times. And they came out with something called the final rule and back in February. Now, you were very proactive. You're the only entity that I've dealt with that actually took what they told you from the start and implemented a plan to put that money into the community. And you've done it. You've done a great job at that. Then you can see, if you look in the MDNA letter, there's, Jody had a schedule, which I included, that has all the places that you've put money. You know, broadband, childcare, you know, health and human services, all areas that were needed. What's interesting is that you followed the rule the way you were supposed to. But by the time they got around to February, they came up with a final rule and they said anything under ten million dollars in, in entities that received that, spend any way you want. You can treat it as lost revenue. And which in the early days, they said you had to go through this whole process to prove that. Well, you don't, you don't have to do that now. So you did the right thing with what you had at the time. Yet this point, whatever you have not committed, you literally could use it for whatever operations with, which is legal within a county that you see fit. Oskota County, they're sitting on, I think, eight hundred thousand dollars in their first wave. They've got another eight hundred coming, or maybe they've got it now. They're going to build a new sheriff's department with their, because they've been in need of that. They built new county building after the fire, but they didn't have the money to do the other. They didn't want to borrow. Well, now they've got, and I, and I believe their commissioners have made that decision to do that. Some townships have put it into broadband and some of them are still sitting out trying to figure out what to do with that money. But in essence, I think I want to point out is that you took in two point three, you spent out a nine hundred twenty-nine thousand. You still have a million four, but it's been committed to, you know, what your committee had decided and how to, how to put that out there. And so it's kind of an interesting thing, because you did, you did the right thing with what, what you were told at the time.
It, it was interesting from the standpoint, I know Mark and I sit on the Northern Michigan County Commissioners meeting. We'll be meeting again on Monday, but out of thirty-four, I think it's thirty-four counties, only two were proactive on it. Roscommon and Isabella.
Yeah.
And the other guys, as I said, the other county just kind of sat back. So they're now kind of gloating a little bit. But, you know, I'm thinking, gloat all you want. I think we were better off doing what we did.
Well, you did what the purpose was. The purpose was to get the money out there, you know, like when COVID hit. You could go any place, community in the state of Michigan, probably anywhere in the United States. And childcare has disappeared. You know, they lost people, they had no capability. Just disappeared. You know, they lost people, they had no capability of bringing kids in. A lot of these places closed down. And I know that's one of the areas that you guys put money in and, uh. You know, those counties that didn't do anything, they're, they got a problem. If you talk to a young. Family, Tyler could attest to this, it's very difficult to find childcare, uh, because of the fact that people couldn't. Deal with the COVID issues. And so, um, you did the right thing. You got it out there. The intent was this was money to get out into the community and get the economy going and get these services back up to running where they were supposed to. So that's why I'm saying, kudos to you because you did the right thing. And I'm not saying Oscoda did the wrong thing, but they just. You know, the part of this was the federal government's fault because they couldn't come clear what they wanted to do and how they wanted to do it. And they kept. Jody could attest, probably got every week a different email on, on, on what they were going to do. And they, it wasn't till. Everywhere they came up with that final rule. Now they are saying in the final rule, they encourage you to put that money into the community. But they're not requiring it. And you still have to attest to the federal government where you did put the money, but if you have less than 10 million, which every of my clients up here have. They're, they're basically, you can spend it how you choose. We just were in Nestor Township, uh, two, yesterday, two days ago. And, um, I believe they're putting nurse into the fire department, which is a good place to put it. So, um, but you did right. I'm going to move us back up in the front of the audit to page 24. And, uh, this, uh, we talked about this pretty much every year, uh, page 24. And 25 are the proprietary funds of the county. And the first column is the one I'm really interested in. Is the tax payment fund. A tax payment fund is the fund that Rebecca, your treasurer handles, uh. This money that's sitting in here is used to buy out all the delinquent taxes every spring from the townships and everybody. Pay off the schools, pay off the county levies and then collect the delinquent taxes through that fund. And you look around the state, you will not find too many counties that have any money in there because what they've done is used it as they made it. Your county and Oscoda County were very conservative and didn't, as they, they used to have to go out and borrow the money through a bond. And then pay the bond off with the monies that they got from the delinquencies. Well, over the years, back when Dory Barber here was in Joyce Weber and, and Julie and now Rebecca, you, you've. Uh, built that up by not utilizing the money. And now you have the ability to just write a check and pay off those delinquencies. So there's, if you look on there, you can basically see you have, uh, nine and a half million dollars in total assets. In the, uh, the tax payment fund. And if you look on the next page, you'll see how that money was derived. Uh, you'll see about million six came in and, and, uh. Admin fees and collection fees, and then you spent out 660,000 on forfeiture costs. So the fund. Netted out, when you get down about two thirds of the way down, you'll see a million 29 is what that fund. Generated as revenue this last year and you transferred out 425,000 or 426 rounded. So it's still netted out a $600,000 surplus in there, which brought it from the 8.9 to the 9.5 in total assets. Now, last year you, you ended up, uh. You took out a million some, it was Europe, um. The 464 and 25,000 is 591,000. Uh, less, or no, it's actually last year you netted out, you depleted that fund by 591,000. So I think it was about a million four, millions five that you transferred out. So. Um, this year you allowed the fund grow a little bit. It's a great fund for, uh, I call it the rainy day fund, special projects. Uh, you do use some of that for operations because admin fees to have to be utilized from the collections have to be, are transferred in to subsidize the treasurer's office. And you used it for, you've used it for some other operational purposes, but for the most part, you've done a pretty good job at allowing that fund to grow and use it when. Almost like a budget stabilization, when you need money for a special project, you'd add, when you built the new courthouse, that fund was intricate in. And making that happen, you wouldn't be able to do it the way you did it and save the money that you did, uh, and that's taxpayers' money. So, um. I guess the, the, I would encourage you to continue that sort of a prospect. And I know that. Some of you aren't going to be here next year, so it would be prudent to explain that to. Successors so that that. Mindset continues because if you deplete it, it's never going to come back. You'll never be able to get it back in your lifetime. I, I mean, you know, there's, I don't think, uh.
So, um, Rebecca, I know can't be in here for this, but I will, uh, reiterate what she has been reminding us. Um, we do have those pending lawsuits individually against the county and then, um. Statewide in regards to tax foreclosures. We do have that, um, potential for her to have to pay back. Three years based on the settlements of, um, of, of that. So she has, um. earmarked what she believes that's going to be based on, you know, the worst case scenario happening on the settlements. Um, obviously you passed a policy five years ago in place of. The amount, you know, she'll set the amount she needs to pay back all of the townships. Um. Of course we have more specialist assessments, um. You know, if you have a super successful assessment, all of those things will increase the amount that gets paid back into that. Um, so. Right now we're, we're doing good for the worst case scenario in that tax payment fund. Um, so as long as that policy is in place and then, you know. Add on with a list of board policies to the new board members, I think that will be pretty good.
That was my next note. You do have litigation, I'll tell you that. Back this, to what extent, it's unknown. So I'm not. We didn't set anything aside in there because it's an unknown number and it's a class action suit. So it's hard to say how long that'll be, how much. Uh, some of that I think is a little bit out there because if you lost your property and. You didn't pay your taxes and somebody else ends up with it and sells it, makes a little bit of money. Should you get that money? I, 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 I guess I have a problem with that, but that's.
We'll see what happens. It's in the courts.
It is, it is a good, you, you know, the big thing that you got here, this is what shores up. Your county as a whole, when you look at the big picture, that's, and that's where I'm leaving with all this. Um. And I don't want to drag on, so we'll move on. So I want you to bounce back to page 59 on the, uh. And, uh, I just talked about some good things. We'll talk about some not so good things. The, the county has a pension plan. It's a defined benefit plan through MERS, which defined benefit means that you, uh, have made a promise to pay based on some formula. Uh, upon retirement. So difference between that and defined contribution is like, defined contribution is like a 401K. I put money in, Mark puts money in, I, as an employer, I'm like, I'll just give you 3% and whatever's there is yours and. I'm done with my responsibilities as employer to, to match that. By benefit. My responsibility to employer stays until you pass on. And so if it says that you get a lifetime worth of benefits. Uh, the actuary has, for MERS has to calculate what's. What's your life expectancy? What's the likelihood of you hitting that? What's the inflationary factors that are going to be in place? When will you retire? And then they come in, calculate a present value of that liability. This schedule on page 59 is a summary of that. And if you look in the first column of 21, you'll see the total, the first. Grand total, the total liability for the, the county and their pension plan is 33,257,000. The next grand total is the amount of money that's sitting in the accounts at, uh, the end of December, which is 26,930,000. So your unfunded liability is, um, 6.3 million dollars. Now, if you do the quick math, uh, that means you're 81% funded. And if you look on that schedule and you look to the right, you'll see that you've actually done. A decent job getting that percentage high because in a perfect situation, you'd want that 100% funded. And, uh, you look below that, the amount of payroll that's attributed to the pension is 3,589,000. So that liability in relationship to an annual payroll is 176%. So basically what it means is that liability equals 176% of that whole year's worth of payroll. It's almost like two years worth. So again, in a perfect situation, your, uh, funded percentage would be 100. And that one right there would be zero. And, uh, that's where you're working. And you can see that that number has declined over the last several years. Um. The part of the problem here or series of problems, um, MERS used the same. Assumptions for a lot of years and we've talked about this before. They used 8% return on their investments for 20 years and if they. Buy me 8%, I'll buy in right now unless it's cryptocurrency. So. They're, they've had to make some assumption changes. And if you look inside that first column and that first section, you'll see. About halfway down, it says changes in assumption, 1,346,000. That's an addition, you know, to the liability in that year. And if you look to the right, you see there was 860,000. So every time they change assumption, it's neg, it's a negative effect to you. That's going to add to that liability. And so they've been forced to change their rate of return. They're down to 7%. It was from 8% to 765, 735, now it's down to 7. So every time they force them down, you know. And I say they, the state's telling them, you gotta change your assumptions. So, um. That has a negative effect because it's increasing the liability. The other thing that's going to affect us is the economy is hanked. Since the end of the year. And so the 22 numbers I suspect are not going to be as pretty as far as. The value of what's there. This is, this money is in the stock market. This is not checking account. So that's going to be affected by the market. And I, to what extent, I can't tell you. And, you know, when you look at the, uh, the fiduciary side of this. You can see a trend anyways. If you look about where it says plan of fiduciary net position, right, by kind of middle of that page. And you'll see net investment income. You'll see in 2021 that the plan had 3,363,000 dollar income. Like that in 21 was a good year. 20 wasn't too bad either. 2,700, uh. 64. And, but if you go over four years back to 2018, you will see a negative number in there because every so often there's a correction. But you've actually done pretty well in the last three years and that you're, you're going to, I suspect in 22, you're going to see a setback. Now, if you go to the next page, this is a, uh, a schedule of contributions. And what I just want to point out in here, this is like a 10 year span of what. They told you, that first line is actuarially determined contribution, which means it's just what they said you should put into the plan. And, um. Then the next line is what you actually put in. And the next line is if you put in extra, and you have put in extra over the last several years. Not a ton, but you put in extra money. If you look at your contribution from 2012 annually, that was 612,000 or 602,000. And you look at it in 2021, you're at a million three, that's up 705,000, you know, increase over 10 years. And, um. When you look at that as a percentage of the annual payroll, that's 33%. You know, I remember when I started auditing and the, the real thumb was, okay, payroll is whatever it is and fringes are 25% is kind of the real thumb. I need more. It's, just this alone is 33% and you're, you know, and then you got health insurance and all the other things. Um. But I do want to talk real quickly, this handout. Now, last year I put this right in your MDNA hand, I think everybody's got one of these on their table. Okay? This came out of your 21 actuary report, which we just got. That's, this is the newest numbers you're going to have. And what this is, um. Is that first one is kind of telling you, um. What they expect your percent funded to be and when you'll hit projected 100% funded in your fund, in your pension. And right now it's around 2039, 2040 is when they think they'll hit it. Okay? The part that's really interesting is down below that, you'll see, uh, the chart and there's three lines. And there's a, a spotted blue and a dotted, uh. Orange and then a solid blue. The solid blue is the assumptions that they're currently using. The other ones are using. The what ifs, like if the rate of return isn't 7%, it's six or let's say five. Then the contribution obviously would have to be higher to cover your, your, uh, payments. What I want to point out in here is that you could see in 2023 on the solid blue line, based on, and this is assumptions currently used. Um, your annual contribution would be a million four approximately. And the way they calculated it, it's going to continue to go in well into, well above billion five. Into 2028 and then you'll see the decline. Uh, in your contributions, required contribution. And the reason for that is that there's two parts to what you contribute. There's the normal cost, which is just the. Based on that current year's, uh, payroll. And then there's the, the catch up section, you know, the un, un. The, uh, pay for the, the shortfall that you had in your, uh, in your pension. And so. Based on what I see here, they figure by 2028, you would have the, um. You know, the, uh, on, uh. I don't know what else, brain farts. The, the portion that's, uh. That you're short on your pension that will be taken care of by them. And then you'll see the decline and the decline is because you should have that paid up. But if you look at it and say, okay, well, what if we don't make 7%? What if it's six? Well, then you gotta use the orange line. And, and, you know, so, uh, they're making it visual so you can see this. And I, the reason I'm bringing this up is budgeting. Because you're budgeting it. Based on, um. What they're telling you at that point in time. The thing is, is that the rate of, the rates that Jody has given. Or let's say 2022 is based on the 2020. MERS report because that, that report comes out in June of 2020 and sets the rates for 2021. So a lot happens in 18 months from the point when that was measured to the point that you. Get the information and utilize it. And so that's why a lot of governments are being proactive and paying extra in on the MERS because they know. That they're probably using old information is probably not, um, not keeping up with the trends. And that's something that you're going to have to consider as a board. Jody has to consider in her, in her budgeting. Is that this is clearly telling me you got a long road before you're going to have this thing fully funded. Now, if you talk to MERS and they came in here and they'll say you're 8% funded.
Yeah, you get a thumbs up. Yeah.
And you are, you know, Tony's right when he tells you that, but it's. But if you look at that as a liability to the county, it's still a $6 million liability that's out there. And for a county that really doesn't have debt. Much, uh, that's a pretty good sized number. And where it affects you is where I'm heading next. Um.
Well, that, that contribution excess that we've put in over the last, particularly the last four years is a half, over a little over half a million dollars. Which in what you're looking at isn't a lot, but it's a good thing we did. It didn't, it did affect it. It did help us.
I've got.
That's why we got to the 81%.
I got a road commission that's paying in 50 grand a month, trying to hedge this law, trying to catch up. Not yours. Yours is on a defined.
Right.
Contribution plan. But, um, if you go to page 17. And this is where I was staying up in the front of the report is the comprehensive information, uh. Page 17 is the statement of net position. So when you guys budget, you're basing it on basically its essence cash in, cash out by fund. Okay, your budgeting, general fund, childcare fund and so on. This takes everything, combines it all in there. And a statement of net position is basically the balance sheet, but it's also including all assets of the county and all debts of the county. Everything's here. And so this gives you a. And so this gives you a real viewpoint of, of financially where you're at on December thirty first, two thousand twenty one. So the first column is all the governmental activities, which be all your governmental funds, like general fund, so on. Uh, so this is the same as the combined balance sheet, except it's got, you'll see in their capital assets in the app, in the, in the asset section, which is seven million dollars. That's this building and all your vehicles and everything, net of depreciation. The, the other thing that's included in here that's not in the other is the uh uh long term debts. And you'll see in liabilities, there's ten million seven hundred ninety thousand dollars in there, which includes two, two million two hundred fifty nine thousand of post employment benefit liabilities. That's, that's your healthcare paid after retirement. You have a window of time that you subsidize your healthcare and that's done by an actuary and we've included those liabilities. But doubt, you'll also see the six million dollar pension debt in there. Okay, it's in there as a debt as in ten years ago, that wasn't in there. But now it is, there's, under the new reporting standards, they want everything to be much more transparent, so that's in here. So uh when you consider the total assets minus all the liabilities and the deferrals from monies going in and out. Uh, you come down to the grand total, the very bottom number, you have a three million seven hundred five thousand dollars net position. That's sort of like fund equity, but it's termed different for this statement. What's interesting is you take that and you subtract out the live or the fixed assets because those aren't usable. Those are hard assets you're not gonna ever spend. Those get pulled out and they're up in another part of that net position section, six million three. Well, then that forces that number into a negative. Okay, which this is where you were at last year, this is no different. You're actually. You're actually two million better than you were last year with that number. But it does send a message that, hey, when you take consideration our, our debts. We, we have a three million dollar net equity, but we only have, we have a negative three million in uh money that's available to. If you had to pay everything off tomorrow, you'd have, you'd have a problem. You go to the next column over, which is the business type activities of proprietary funds. And this includes a tax payment fund and you'll see that number right next to that negative, that nine million three forty three is positive. Now, this includes the airport and the commissary fund too, but the most, the majority of that is the tax payment fund. And so when you go further to the right on the grand total, that's puts you into a positive six million two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And that's why it's so important that the tax payment fund is part of the comprehensive. And if you had spent that down, guess what, that would all be negative in there. And there's, there's counties that when you look at this, there's a huge negative number right there. Because they got a pension plan that was unfunded and for years that was nothing but a footnote in the audit. It wasn't part of the financial reporting. You know, in the last, I don't know, five, six, seven years, it's part of the financial reporting and that changed things. So uh you're, the guys that rate you for bonds, uh they say that, wow, we're, we are not gonna take that in consideration. But you know, it's psychologically, when you look at it and see a negative number, that's good. So you know, overall though, it's actually, when you look at your, the grand scheme of things, you're not too bad. So um. One, a couple of other things I just want to touch on and the, in the back on page one oh two is report on internal control and compliance. You guys spent more than seven hundred fifty thousand dollars this last year in federal money. That normally would mean that you have to have a single audit. But because the final rule that came out in February on the ARPA money, they said, if you went over seven fifty because of ARPA, you don't have to have a single audit. In fact, they tell you, don't do a single audit. What they do say is that you render an opinion on two attributes of that federal money that was ARPA, which I have not issued that report yet. Because the A I C P has not come up with the what to put in that report. Well, I drafted one, but I didn't, I'm not gonna send it to the state until they tell me that, that wording out. So we did the audit under what's called yellow book rules and the, which is similar to the single audit. This letter basically states that that's what we did. We did the audit on, on, under government auditing standards. And the first section about internal control, we look at your controls as part of the audit, we test them. Uh, and we'll tell you if we think that there's something that's a flaw, flaw in your controls that would allow a material misstatement of federal money or any other monies there. And basically the states that, that it wasn't any. And compliance is the same thing, we're not here to audit compliance, but if we see something that's not right, this statutory that you didn't do, then we would report on it if it has an effect on the financial statements. There is a one finding in here that's the same one you have every year, basically. Uh, Jody is not a CPA, she does a great job with what she does, but her, she's not trained to put these uh, uh, report together of this magnitude with all the uh auditing or accounting standards that you'd have to have to meet. You know, to meet the audit standards. We do that as part of your audit, we use the numbers after they've been verified and then we put them in there and we use the information provided by you. So that's basically what this is stating. And one of the safeguards that we use to make sure that uh that doesn't mar our independence is that your audit report is then sent to another CPA firm that I've uh worked with. And they review your report to make sure that I didn't cross the line on independence or uh there's nothing in here that is wrong. So you're getting a second set of eyes professionally before it gets sent out. Um, the other letter that's in the back that's loose is a communication of governance. This is uh what we used to call a management letter. And uh talks about what my responsibilities are with the audit and, and if you read, kind of do the head, headlines on there, talk about what the significant accounting policies are. Whether we had difficulties encountered in performing the audit, which we did not, it states in there disagreements with management, there were none that uh as far as how things get done. And uh whether you consulted with another CPA firm because you didn't like what I told you, as far as I know, you didn't do that. Um, there are some findings in here that we, you know, when we met for the exit conference, we talked about a whole slew of things. These are just the key ones that either are required to be in here or they're significant enough to bring them to the board's attention. First one I'm required to put in is the budget law, if you had any variances that were negative. But when you look at the, the size of your entity and the variances in here, they're really insignificant. I'm just required to state them if there, there were any and those are in the footnotes of the audit. The T and A, I'd say this is probably one area that really needs to get cleaned up. It's the, you got a bond account that was basically closed out, put into the trust agency and so it's isolated in a new account and this was established, this was years ago. Those monies that are sitting there are restitution and bond monies that either should be distributed to the state or they're determined that they're fees to the county or returned to a proper recipient through, through the courts. And um this was started, this was really from back when your prior clerk was here. And Michelle more or less inherited it, so I know she's been working on it, but it's, it's not done. If uh two funds that have minor deficits and that was the pro- childcare probate and a law library fund. Uh, you will need to make a resolution to show that you've either eliminated them or, and once that's done, send it to me with a, you know, that's certified and I'll send it to the state. You're, at the old, you need a board resolution to clear that up. I know you already did, it's the month, they were very minor, but you know, I can't fix, fix it after the fact. So it's uh the childcare fund, you, as you know, you, you subsidized that, I think, last year by five hundred seventy nine thousand dollars, which is very similar to the same month that was prior year. That fund's heavily subsidized by the general fund and it's kind of a black hole because you have to pay, you budget and deal with it. But you don't make the decisions on where the money is spent and I think they do a great job here and I think that's not the issue. But it's the nature of the beast. As a board, it would be very frustrating to have to budget and not have much say and that's, that's just the way it is. Um, but I know that that fund has since been rectified. You just need to make a resolution to that fact and then send it to the, I'll send it to the state for you. Basic grant you had, Dawn was retired and I think that fund or that's grant kind of got set aside and the paperwork wasn't being filed on it. And so when we came to do the audit, there was money that was due to the county that hadn't been received because the reporting wasn't done. And I think since then, that's been rectified. Um, as I did meet with the people that are, are working on that. I guess that, you know, closing um. Overall, number one, you did a great job budgeting, even, even though there was those minor things that you saw in there. Uh, when I look at a budget, it's the general fund of nine million dollars and you were that close without making a huge amount of adjustments, means there was a lot of foresight in the budgeting process because you're setting those budgets beginning at the end of the prior year to go into the next year. The, the other thing you got going for you is you don't have any debt. Uh, you have those special assessments that basically you're, you're funding those special assessments through your tax payment fund, which you couldn't have not done if you didn't have that. That, that fund. I would, you know, you're using long term planning, I would urge you to use a five year rolling budget, even though legally you have to do an annual budget. I would just have that five year rollout all the time so you know where you're, where you're going. Just put some assumptions in there. Um, having a controller makes a big difference, that position. You compare this to like when we do OSCO to county, there's so many jobs that is being done within Jody's office that has to be spread around even in between commissioners and these other counties. And so they don't get done or they don't get done effectively as they should so that that position is key. Continued issues, pension's gonna be a problem, healthcare costs are gonna be a continued issue. Um, inflationary fact, factors or costs this coming year are gonna probably screw your budgets up. I'm sure that if you talk to Ed, Sheriff Stern, that you know, cost of putting patrol cars on is costing more. I've got an ambulance department in another county that's cutting back on their, you know, travel with their, you know, putting up ambulances out there because it costs a lot of money to put those diesel vehicles up there. Uh, you got ARPA to wrap up, which you pretty much got that under control, jails are continued thing that's got to be managed. And like I said, the childcare fund is one of those examples, you know, you're putting a half million dollars plus a year into that fund. And um. It's not much you can do to change that other than I've always had a kind of a question in my mind. I'm a CPA, I'm not a health worker, but I always questioned about how much it costs to place a child in one of these facilities. And what do you get when they come back out, are they better than they were when they went in? That's outside of my audit scope, but that's one of those. Cause I could, you could see where you'll, on one, one case, you could spend fifty to a hundred thousand dollars on a child. Wonder are they, this is next step, are they gonna be in the county jail or are they gonna be a good citizen in our community? That's a hard, hard one to answer, but that's part of the reason that costs so much. Uh, I think I've covered the scope, is you have any questions regarding the the audit?
Mr.'s got anything for the audit?
Like whatever.
Yep, well.
Overall.
Understood what you said.
Well, that's, that's always important.
Jim and Tyler, it's, and a pleasure to have you here again this year and it's nice to have, to have a report in front of us like this. The kudos should go down to Jody Valentino, our administrator controller immensely, and we can't thank her enough. Also got the sheriff's department and everything with, with the jail and everything that they're dealing with in today's world and they, they're, they're a positive.
Uh, you've, you've actually, you've got, you know, and I, I know Rebecca's listening and I want you to know Rebecca that uh, you know, her, her financial stuff is spot on and.
Right.
That's important because the fact that you all work together, the way you do is what makes things successful. You go into a township or a county and you have people butting heads and, and having uh of issues with uh not getting along, uh they get territorial, then things don't get done. And so you've got, everybody works well together. One of the issues we had in the prior year, we had to do with audited, not all adjustments or just adjustments that Jody and, and Rebecca are doing. And they've worked through that and they've got a good process going now, but you know, it, it's, it's a team effort.
Well, Jody's got a good rapport with all the departments and she can communicate with them and, and, and they respect her and they, and, and she respects them and, and they go to work on it. And, and the team effort, but everybody that works for the county.
Yep.
Well, um, otherwise you wouldn't get a report like this.
So it's been sent to the state already because you had to have it by June thirtieth. And your, all your F sixty five and all the other stuff's been filed. The only thing we probably will need to deal with is your deficit elimination plan. And once we file that, you probably already got a letter from the state, I'm thinking. Yeah, because soon as I send that in, it's automatic.
No, it's not, it's not only what the treasurer's office does, which is tremendous, but the clerk's office brings in a tremendous amount of revenue too. So I mean, kudo, kudos to them too, so. Um, the thing is, is you know, in budgeting, you can bring in more money, but that's sometimes it's better, you're better off working on the expense side and keeping them down and the other will follow in line. So that's my experience with budget, so. Jim, I think it's a good time for you and I to leave. All right, anybody got anything else?
You know, big, big, I don't know if you said, Mr. Cherry, you know, bottom line is the credit always goes to, you know, the controller and the department heads and our exceptional employees. This isn't a light comment, this is, this is serious. This is, we really mean that, this is a well seasoned board and without exceptional department heads and exceptional employees and the work that the controller and Julie and Noel do in the office, this report would be the same, so. The, the credit always goes to those who do the work and those are the folks that I just mentioned, thank you.
As commissioners, we come in and go out.
So. Well, your job theoretically is legislative, but in small entities in Roscommon, big scheme of things, it's fairly small still. But before you had a controller, this board, because I've been around a while and this, this board was doing a lot of the hands on stuff that normally would be handled by a department. And that was because you wanted to, it was because it was out of necessity. And so, you know, if you've gotten better at that, where you, as a board can sit here and work on a financial, big picture standpoint and not actually be dealing with the day to day stuff, which in theory is not what you're supposed to be doing, but like I said, out of necessity, you've had to in the past because you just didn't have anybody else to do it.
Right. Okay.
All right.
I don't have anything else, nobody else has anything else, so.
Boy.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yep, congratulations Tyler. Yeah, well, we've all been there. All right. I think we'll keep moving right on, is that okay with you, Commissioner Milburn? You don't, you don't need, you, okay, you don't need a comfort break yet, all right. All right, uh, now item number three, St. Hill and Vet Fest twenty twenty two, Larry Foster. Oh, yeah. Who's that?
It was actually through Blue Star Service Dogs.
Okay.
Somebody that uh I met when I was at Fowlerville Vet Fest and I qualified uh with my VA disabilities, having traumatic brain injury when I served to get a service dog and she was actually to no cost to me. Unlike some of our northern programs that are out there right now, they're, they have actual cost to the veteran. Uh, approximately fifteen thousand dollars, some of the northern Michigan programs. Uh, Blue Star's out of Brighton, we're actually, uh, as of yesterday, we actually got the okay to start looking for a satellite facility up here to bring uh Blue Star up here, they'll be up here at the Vet Fest as well. But uh they have seven Roscommon County veterans that were recently approved for service dogs. And uh they can't transport themselves down to Brighton. So with that, you have to figure out a way, I mean, it takes me, I have to go down once a month. they have to figure out a way. I mean, it takes me, I have to go down once a month now that I've received Raven. And, uh, I have to go down once a month for two hours and a couple of weeks ago, my trip was almost four hours from my house to Brighton. And then yesterday it was about an hour and 45 minutes. You never know what the traffic down there. So, yeah, she's, uh, she's doing really well. She'll go for GCG national testing here in two weeks. Uh, she's already had her state testing. So, but she's been working pretty well. Everybody stay out of fire hopefully?
Yep.
All right. So that's good. That's good. I've been helping a lot of people. Uh, my wife's has been too. Uh, there's a lot of people that are not sure how to sign up for this. There's a QR code on the paper that you got. Also you can register through their website as well. Right now we're trying to push for about another 750 people registered by the end of the month. So it's very big to get that. If we can get that by the end of this month, uh, this, this goes on August 27th. But if we can get that by the end of this month, we already have a sponsor for next year's. So that's the number we're pushing for right now. Um, if you have any organizations or anything you can talk to, please get this out to them. I've been putting these all over the county. This also applies to active duty members. So can't really, he's got a couple of these flyers. Uh, this applies to other counties as well. So we're pushing this and all the other counties as well. A lot of the veteran offices, a lot of the other, uh, commissioners and other counties, we're pushing this. We got this out to them. Uh, we're going to, we're about to do, uh, 10,000 mailer, uh, off a zip code based on veterans for five county area. Um, that life was able to get through the state of Michigan, a list of veterans. There's about 10,000 of them is what they figured on their total. So uh, but I just wanted to make sure I came in, let you guys know, we got this going. It is good to go. Uh, I've got a lot of time invested into it. Uh, when I met with you guys last time I mentioned it, uh, not long after that I went to the chiropractor and my neck was adjusted just right to have a stroke. And I had to take a little bit of a break. So, um, but I have been back at it. I've been, uh, getting as much as I can done. We were not able to get the food trucks before the flyer was posted. So we ended up having to get the whole event catered. There will be food there though. Uh, we had Alan Scher help us with the liquor license down there, uh, because there are, every veteran's allowed to buy one drink while they're there. Uh, we've talked with the sheriff's department. They're going to have a bunch of people there. We've talked with a lot of fire EMS agencies. They'll be there. It's pretty much like a national night out for veterans with about 60 vendors for veteran services.
Well, so the logistics of it, you're going to be having it at the township park there?
Uh, yeah, everybody, the airport they have there.
Yeah. Okay. Good. Yeah. They got a big pavilion there. So, yeah.
And we also have the other pavilion. We have both pavilions there. They have the food pavilion as well.
Okay.
So we have both of those rented out and, uh, it'll be just like when they did the Blue Gill Festival, that whole section area there.
I'm assuming the townships, which those townships cooperating?
Yeah, they were actually pretty easy to work with when I went down there.
Good.
They were like, no way. And, cause I told them how big it could be and they were very concerned. Uh, the program itself, they say it could be up to 10,000 people. They base that off of anywhere from 1,000 to 3,000 registered veterans. And then with those registered veterans, each one will bring two to three dependents with them. A spouse, two kids or more. In her while, I know.
That's good. So that's on the 27th of August.
27th of August. Yep. It's going to be from noon to four. They're going to bring, uh, with them, they bring, he said it's anywhere from 50 to 150 personnel with them. Uh, those are all people that'll be renting hotel rooms in the area that are, you know, coming to our area to help with this. Uh, we've got approximately a dozen other volunteers so far. We need about another dozen more for this event. Um, like I said, this event's for any veteran or active duty personnel with their families that are allowed to come in. Pre-registration is required. Uh, if you don't register beforehand and you get there, it does take about 20 to 30 minutes to get registered. So it kind of takes away from your time. You know, there's a long line. We went to the Fowlerville one, my wife and I did last year. And we watched the line for about two hours after the event started for veterans that didn't pre-register to get in.
Yeah, that's, that's good to know. My son's going to be here from Paris.
Okay.
He'll be, actually leaves back on the 28th. So he'll be here, but he's a veteran and.
He can get registered for this and.
That's right. I'll get with him. I'll get with him. Okay.
That's all I got for you guys.
All right. Any questions?
We'll be there.
Perfect.
All right. Thank you, Larry. Thanks for the communication. Item four, Roscommon County Bludgeon Memorial Airport Block Grant. Eric Karos.
Jimmy Henderson took off my time, darn it.
You know, I'm glad you recognized that. But this, Mr. Milburn would appreciate.
Somebody love this year. Um, okay. Uh, we'll cut right to the chase here. Um, this has to do with the terminal, um, airport terminal apron project. Okay. The apron is the large asphalt parking area slash taxi area for the aircraft to get gas and the transient movement of airplanes um, to and from the hangars. It's time for that thing to get rehabbed. Okay. That project is broken down into actually two different projects. Both federal projects. Um, the first one is the design. Um, the design project is a $40,000, um, project, Prine and Newhoff designs the, um, the construction piece of it. Um, so that's the first piece. Now normally the, the way the funding structure works is um, the, the fed, the federal piece is 90%, they pay 90%, which is the FAA. Um, the state pays 5% and we, the sponsor, Roscommon County, we pay 5%. Okay. So we're really leveraging that 95% of federal and state money um, at a 5% match. It's a good deal for the county. However, in the design phase, um, the, 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 that project is going to be a 100% funded by the federal FAA money. Okay. So normally we would have to pay our 5% or 2,000, but the FAA is picking up 100% of that according to um, the sponsor contract. The construction piece of it, our engineers, uh, construction estimate was 410,000 for the construction piece. A low bid, which has been awarded to Reeve Riley, they are going to do the work. They came in at 397,305 dollars, which is, um, below the 410,000 dollar estimate by 12,695 dollars. Good news. Um, especially with, with the price of asphalt these days, it's up and, and other things, as you know. And then also as part of the construction project is the Prine and Newhoff, our airport engineers, their administration fee um, during the construction phase. Their fee is 44,500. So if you add the numbers, um, for the construction piece, it is 441,805 dollars. Our piece of it is 5% or roughly 22,090 dollars and 25 cents. Okay. So there again, we're leveraging that 95% of federal and state money coming into the airport for, for, um, capital improvement. The total with, with the design of, of the entire project is 481,805 dollars. Okay. But our share again is a roughly 22,100 dollars. We won't know the final numbers until the project is, is actually completed and closed out. So what I'm asking from you all is, um, to move on accepting both for, for any given project we do, there is a sponsor contract between the state and us, the sponsor, Roscommon County. And so I'm asking you to support and move on accepting both of those contracts, one of which has already been executed. Um, as of today. And, and the other one, um, for the construction piece now, the construction project is slated to be approved by the Michigan Aeronautics Commission on July 20th at their next meeting. Once they approve the project, then we will see the sponsor contract come through. Okay. From Elise down there at MDOT. And so, um, even though we don't have that contract yet, I'm, I'm asking that you move to accept it when it does get here. Because this is a, a time-sensitive project. We want to do the project right after Labor Day. The airport is going to be remaining open. And it's a two to three week project. So to, to get this project finished and completed this year, um, you know, it has to be transferred at the state level and then we will see the, the sponsor contract. Um, pretty soon right after that, then, uh, transfer. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell. I know I covered a lot of ground there in a short time. Any, any questions?
Emphasis on short, but thank you. Um, so that's why we've got a motion on to adopt the resolution in support of this. It is time sensitive.
Yes.
You are making a presentation. It is, we normally, you know, I'll clarify, we always wait two weeks, but in this particular case it is time sensitive and it is some, it is grant money that 95% of us paid for. So I think it's a good deal.
Yes.
I think we should go.
And then so, yeah.
I'll put that on for motion if it'd be all right with the rest of the board.
To your point, I mean, it's the motions and the resolution authorizing Bob to sign those sponsor contracts. Okay?
Okay. All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. With that, we will take, uh, we will be back here at 10:30 for our regular meeting. Thank you. Okay. Well, we get started here. Uh, welcome to Roscommon County Board of Commissioners meeting. Um, July 13th, 2022. Everyone please stand for the pledge allegiance. Mr. Milburn, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Thank you, sir.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Onto item number three, roll call, please, Amy.
Russo. Schneider.
Here.
Milburn.
Here.
Muckenthaler.
Here.
Melvin.
Okay. Item four, approval of the agenda, please.
Ms. Chair.
Okay. Motion is made by Commissioner Milburn, seconded by Commissioner Russo to approve the agenda. Any further comments from any commissioners this time in regards to the agenda? During our scene, none. Roll call.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Ms. Chair.
Okay. Um, item number five, approval of minutes for meetings, six, eight, 2022 and six, 20, six, 22 of 22 regular meetings and six, eight, 22 for a special meeting.
Second.
Motion is made by Commissioner Russo, seconded by Commissioner Muckenthaler to approve the minutes for the six, eight and six, 22 regular meeting and the six, eight special meeting. Any further comment from any commissioner at this time? During our scene, none. Roll call.
Milburn.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Ms. Chair.
Okay. Item number six, um, claims and accounts. Class A's, please.
Move to approve class A bills in the amount of 2,492,963 dollars and 33 cents.
I'll make that motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Muckenthaler, seconded by Commissioner Russo to, um, prove class A is an amount of 2,492,963 dollars and 33 cents. Any further comment from any commissioner at this time? During our scene, none. Roll call.
Schneider.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Ms. Chair.
Okay. Claims and accounts, please.
Move to approve claims and accounts in the amount of 212,360 dollars and 51 cents.
I'll second that. Motion is made by Commissioner Russo, seconded by Commissioner Schneider to okay, claims and amount, claims and accounts in amount of 212,360 dollars and 51 cents. Any comment from any commissioner at this time, please? During our scene, none. Roll call.
Milburn.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Amy. Item number seven, public comment, agenda items only. Please limit to five minutes. Any public comment at this time? Both in front of me and out in, uh, homeland. Okay. Thank you, Andy. Item number eight, administrator controller report.
Happy Wednesday. Um, instead of naming the lawsuits, we'll just say there's no change in anything with the exception of obviously there's a proposal for settlement that, um, the attorney is here to go into closed session to propose to the board of commissioners that you'll need to make a decision on. Um, the chill versus Roscommon County was accepted, the filing was accepted by the Supreme Court. Now we wait for their response to see if they're going to hear it. And if they are going to hear it, how they will hear it. Um, the opiate suit, we are actually getting very close to that settlement distribution. Um, just as a reminder, we're looking at approximately $30,000 a year for the next 30 years. Um, very specific to what it can be expended on. Um, the two areas that I am urging and suggesting are going to be, uh, Roscommon County Jail and Central Michigan District. And then we'll, we'll bring the most being for our buck to us and what we can do. So quick legislative update, I did share this with the department heads this morning. Um, Governor Whitmer did amend and repeal the three COVID era laws that were in place, including the COVID-19 Employee Rights Act. It will not be fully be repealed until January 2023. But what it is saying is basically as of the repeal date, employees can't sue for failure to comply, but employers must continue to maintain those law, that law until, um, until the end of, beginning of 2023. There are also a slew of bills that are passing through right now. We're trying to be passed through in regards to updating, um, Freedom of Information Act procedures and policies and, um, changes to the Open Meetings Act. Specifically, one of those is to allow for remote meeting participation, but it would be under a caveat of some pretty strict guidelines as well. Um, last couple of weeks, um, there were several changes within our friend of the court with a sudden passing of Tom Swanson. Jacob Kalini is now serving as the referee and Yvonne Falowski is serving as the friend of the court in that role. Um, they have both been given temporary increases for those duties until such a time that the wage and salary committee can actually meet to review the job descriptions and place them appropriately. One of the reasons your class A's, the reason that the class A was so large is I did distribute the remaining American Rescue Plan grifts that went out with the exception of the, um, 500,000 to Charleston and the 300,000 to Northern Michigan, um, Children's Assessment Center. Both of those have specific date needs for those. Um, and I are, am discussing with, uh, the two appropriate parties for that. I am also scheduling a presentation of where we are to date on that for the first meeting of August. And I'm hoping to get a couple of the recipients to come and give you guys, you know, a, a good look at what they have been able to do so far in the community with that money. We've had two, um, human resource investigations that have been conducted. Um, huge thank you to Sheriff and Lieutenant Beck for attending in person the mediation. Um, enjoyed listening to what you guys were having for lunch from here in the office. Sorry that didn't work out for you. Um, but yes, very well. We did have a courthouse security meeting, which we try to hold those monthly. Um, both Chairman Schneider and myself met with all the other county administrators and board chairs for those counties that are in the Northern Michigan Community Mental Health. Um, we are in the process of, where Grand Traverse is deciding whether or not they are going to stay or go on their own. Essentially it sounds like if they go on their own, Leland County will go with them as well. However, we are looking at how can we redo the current articles of incorporation and agreement to make it, uh, better partnerships and make sure that the counties are getting the services that we really need and desire. With the hopes that, um, the Grand Traverse County Board would rescind their current motions and stay if we're able to do that. There is no downside for us, even if Grand Traverse and Leland County will pull out because we would have to have a new agreement anyhow. So we can just use what we're working on to do that. So we will meet again, um, first of August, I believe. I have under sheriff, I have been dragging under sheriff through all of this with me because obviously, um, the sheriff's department is one of our main users of services internally. And so has a lot of that, uh, weekly interaction and would have a lot of, lots. and, um, would have a lot of, lot, lot more input. So kind of nice to have you there because nobody else has their law enforcement present, so then they can look at our undershirt for a little bit of guidance in some areas. Um, the childcare fund presentation on the heels of our audit, the childcare fund presentation for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, that budget will be presented to you at our next I will forewarn you that with the change in laws for the age of an adult versus the age of a juvenile, um, they are looking at almost two hundred thousand dollar increase in their request for allocation. And that is specific to the fact that we're going to be retaining longer and more, so they won't go tail, they will go in at age seventeen for rehabilitation um, processes. So that's going to be a huge increase. Obviously, we attended the audit exit interview and we heard everything that, um, three Anderson and Mr. Waters just informed the entirety of the board of, um, plus what I like to call the tips and tricks, always get a couple of things every per year, um, to kind of put things over and tighten things up a little bit. So we'll put those into place. Um, sure, Stern and I are actually working to review some options right now to offer an early retirement incentive for defined benefit employees. Obviously, um, we've got to find some sort of long-term savings to our, uh, county's retirement for the defined benefit participants. And it sounds like if we did this based on eligibility for years of service and or age, um, we may be able to change some of that unfunded liability associated with it. So hopefully I'll have everything ready and Sheriff and I will have it finalized to present to you at the next meeting because the sooner we do this, the better off we are. Um, last and finally, this is for you, not for me. The MAC conference is September eighteenth, nineteenth, twentieth and twenty-first, and it is in court here on this year. Please let Julie know, know later than the end of July if you plan to attend.
Okay. Any comments from any commissioners? Um, only comment I had was is the, the, the thing with Northern Michigan Mental Health. Under Sheriff has been working with us great, matter of fact. You're the only law enforcement guy there last time? Yep. So anyway, I pre, I appreciate that. So it gets me up to speed with what's going on. Um, uh, I don't kind of up in the air where Grand Traverse Board itself is add on this thing. I do think they found out that there's a to take themselves out is going to cost them, there's a time element there, which is, I, I think there's a year limit on it that they, before they would gap out, and I also think there's a monetary amount to it. So I think there was more cooperation basically from their administrators and maybe it's coming from their board. So but we'll see where it goes. And that's on August first, so we're going back over to Cadillac again, right? Okay. Item nine, correspondence. Get back here. I made myself some notes on my hard copy here because there's nineteen of them. Item I is, A is Lori Darga Planning Commission resignation letter. David already informed of that, right? Okay, you're on that committee. B is MSU Connecting Entrepreneurial Committee Conference on September. Item, there's a bunch of resolutions. I'll run through them as quickly as I can. Sheboygan County is in regards to a, a Zillow Resolution, which we also did. Um, Nisaki County is a Zillow. Berryan County E is a no-fault insurance, which we didn't take any action on that. F is Iron County is Zillow Resolution. G is Livingston County, which is a unregulated private election um, resolution monies. G is Corps of Engineers, this was in regards to, uh, Menominee River. So they're just informing us that we really have nothing involved in that. I is Ant, Ant, Antunagan County, which is Zillow. Branch is J, which is Zillow. K is Eaton County, which is Zillow. L is Go, how do you pronounce that? Go Gipic? Which is Zillow. M is Calhoun, which is Zillow. And then, oh, say it again, Mark.
Go Gipic.
Michigan Works. Bangner Pizerak. Um, which we may want to do a little, um, do a little more investigating in that and we may want to sign on to that, too. Elegant is Zillow. He is Calcasto Zillow. Q is Le, Leonel Zillow. R is Lake County Zillow and S is Jackson County Zillow. So any questions in regards to correspondence from any commissioner? Good, we'll move on. Item ten. We've got, uh, monthly department resources, MSU extensions, July twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-two summer programs. We've got item B, which I see that Daniel and Julie are here, spongy moth slash the spongy moth. I won't say the other thing. I'm not supposed to say it. So defoliation survey summary, you want to give a real quick? Uh, want you two, you come on up and I haven't I haven't had any inquiries and that's good.
That's music to my ears, Bob.
Yep.
Um, we did it a foliation survey a couple of weeks ago and so it's, the information's a little bit older, so I wanted to go ahead and update you. Um, spraying went fine. Um, we feel like that we hit the right window for that. Um, things have calmed down. As you know, the last few years, we've been in an outbreak year with spongy moth. And one point two million acres defoliated last year in Michigan alone. We feel, I, I feel like that, um, we're coming out of the outbreak. It's not over yet. We did have some neighborhoods that still are experiencing sixty to seventy percent of defoliation with a lot of caterpillar frass, leaf matter and just caterpillars. Um, but it's better than it was last year as far as there were whole areas, entire areas that didn't have any leaves on trees. And so we feel like we're coming out of it a little bit in spots in the county. There are still hotspots. And we made note of those. And so as we hire our crews, which we're in the process of doing right now, we've got applications out right now. And we're hoping that we can target some of those areas that we've noticed defoliation in. I also take note of where our phone calls come from and what people tell me over the phone. But we'll focus on a lot of those areas for egg mass counts that we can treat them next year.
Okay. Good. Um, I know when you're going south on twenty-seven, get to Northern Clare County and you go through a, a pretty good stand of oaks, which last year it was really defoliated. And then this year I noticed it's a lot better, but there's some dead oaks. And is that because of their older oaks and they got stressed to the?
It's a mixture of oak decline and oak wilt.
Okay.
Killed those oaks along the freeway. And I've been traveling the state and so I have noticed other areas of defoliation. But in particular, in our county, exit two oh one on one twenty-seven i- is kind of bad, surrounded by state land as well.
Okay.
But we do have bad spots in the county. I'm not going to say that we don't. Um, but we're, we're looking at trying to hopefully treat those next year. Hopefully we'll have smaller areas in extremely high egg mass counts that we'll be able to effectively include in spray blocks.
Okay. All right.
You're on top of your game. It's the quietest I've heard in twenty years.
Yeah. Thank you.
Let's hope it continues. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for a quick report. Okay, C is Ross Common County Sheriff's Department, um, the sheriff's report and the village report. D is county animal control and animal shelter report for June. Any questions from any, any commissioner in regards to department reports? Okay, item eleven, any visitors that'd like to be recognized at this time? Okay. All right. Item twelve. We're going to have to go into, we're going to go into a closed session for the purpose of consulting with our attorney regarding Mock versus Ross Common County allowed under MCL fifteen twenty point two six eight E. So at this time, I'm going to okay, then the motion will read as filed, move to enter a closed session to discuss with our attorney settlement strategy in impending lawsuit Mock versus Ross Common County. Case number one nineteen dot, dot, dot pursuant to MCL fifteen point two six eight E since discussion in open meeting would have detrimental financial effect on the settlement position of the county. So with that, I could have, um, let's vote on the motion to go into closed session. You made, Commissioner Russo made the motion and he's, who's the second?
I'll second, Mr. Chair. Just for the record, can we, can we, can we give the case number again for the record, please?
You're going to make me read that, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. One point nineteen dash C V dash one three zero five three dash P B D dash P T M.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Roll call.
Russo. Schneider.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Okay. With that, if we could have everybody excuse themselves at this time, um,
Sheriff and Lieutenant.
Uh, I think, yeah, we, Sheriff and Lieutenant should stay, I believe, I would, but we did vote to come back out of closed session and go into, back into regular session. So we were at, uh, we will, uh, in regards to number twelve, a- after twelve, we'd like to amend the motions to add motion number four and number five, and, um, I'll have Amy read motion number four first, please.
Move to adopt resolution number two zero two two dash zero seven dash zero two. Resolution identifying authorized signer whereas the Ross Common County Board of Commissioners recognizes the need to clearly identify an authorized signer for the purpose of acceptance of all federal and state block grant agreements and whereas the state of Michigan recognizes the chairperson of the Board of Commissioners as serving as the chief executive officer of, for the county. And now there, therefore, be it resolved that the individual serving in the role of Ross Common County Board Chairperson be identified as the duly authorized signatory for behalf of Ross Common County.
Okay. Last number four. Number five, please.
Move to approve the settlement agreement reached in mediation in the case of Mock versus Ross Common at all, case number one, one nine dash C V dash one three zero five three dash P B D dash P T M.
Okay, so we will amend that to our regular agenda. Mr. Mil, Mr. Milburn?
So, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, then moved and seconded by moved by Commissioner Milburn, seconded by Commissioner Russo to amend the agenda to include motions four and five, which have been read. Okay. Oh, any further discussion from any commissioner? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Russo.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Now we will go on to, uh, motion number thirteen, unfinished or new business. Um, Jody Valentino's got A and B. Might, can, might as well do them both at the same time, one behind the other.
Okay, so obviously, um, short notice, I was not here to give you background on the animal shelter kind of worker. I know that Ms. Foster tried to give some information. I appreciate that. Um, the Wage and Salary Committee, as you remember, several, maybe two months ago, um, Noel came representing that committee. They had one, two, three, four, five different positions that had been recommended to them for review and replacement within the grade levels. Uh, those two, the ones, uh, they had said they thought were of the most urgent need, um, based on across the Board of Commissioners were the animal shelter kind of worker wages, which is actually, um, our grade one and also encompasses gypsy moth group. And then the, the juvenile probation officer, which is a brand new position, um, and someone has been serving in that since the beginning of the year, but just to, you know, say forever in government, um, they have not had an appropriate wage assigned to that. So the recommendation for, for the animal shelter kind of workers, um, was that the grade level is correct for animal shelter and gypsy moth. However, based on other starting wages and similar positions, the actual starting and ending should be shifted. So after reviewing similar positions, um, across the recommended counties that we utilize, their suggestion was to apply a seven percent increase, um, the actual grade one A, which would take, um, it actually from a eleven thirty-eight starting to a twelve thirteen starting. And then the final step, step seven would go from thirteen sixty-six to fourteen fifty-six. And that one is on for motion as well. Um, and then the second is the lead juvenile probation officer salary. Um, the probation officer is actually currently, the juvenile probation officer currently sits at a grade five. They took in the oversight, uh, responsibilities that the lead would be taking on. And then reviewing that new job description, um, placed it at a level six. A level six is a minimum twenty-three ninety-three and a maximum of twenty-eight seventy-one. Um, caveat for juvenile probation officers actually must have a bachelor's degree. That's under statute. So that is a portion to know. Um, and that is, as I said, a step above what the juvenile probation officer. So that motion is also on to Clara to place the new lead juvenile probation officer, uh, position at a grade.
Right. And after last meeting and now I since looked into it and your explanation is perfect, but motion one has to deal with a number of employees which are at the animal control or and or gypsy moth. And motion two is in, is in regards to the lead juvenile probation officer only, one, one position. So I think we were looking for a little clarification on that last meeting. We got it. Thank you. Any other commission, any other questions from any commissioner? Okay. Uh, then let's go on to C, Jody, committee of the whole reallocation of corrections officers premium pay. We had some discussion at the last meeting in regards to a letter. But to this particular point, we were due a letter, but it will be a thirty-day caveat on it, right?
So, yeah, my understanding was, um, probably they didn't get, couldn't get it to myself or Julie exactly who or how or what the letter was to say. And in talking with the chairman and the vice chairman, um, their thought was to have you instruct me to send a la, letter effective today that we would need a response from the, uh, QAM Sheriff's Union in regards to the letter of agreement sent on May eleventh, twenty twenty-two by August thirteenth.
Right. Okay. Before that, uh, any commissioners have any questions in regards to that? Okay, uh, are there other unfinished new business? I want to cover this real quick, but, uh, um, Mr. Milburn was at the same EDC meeting that I was last week and, uh, they did disperse to thirteen entities out of their five hundred and five thousand dollars, which are ARP money. Hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars went out. I think the checks go out today, yesterday or today, matter of fact, to those entities. Today. And then I was talking to Brenda Batshelder yesterday. She's got, I think, two or three more that she's, that she might have brought yesterday. I don't know if she did or not.
Uh, yeah, she said she's going to be bringing them over.
Okay, she's going to bring them over, but that's another thirty-six thousand dollars. So there's going to be over two hundred thousand dollars dispersed from ARP money. It's getting out to where it's supposed to be, okay? And then, uh, what else have I got? Oh, and then I, I do have, I did touch base with all of you on a support letter for, uh, Charleston Heston in regards to a childcare, which has to do with their five hundred thousand dollars that has been earmarked from the ARP money for a childcare building. They're looking for, uh, eight, eight million dollars from the state to help put that together. So, and I did get the affirmative from you guys to let me do that letter. I'll just sign it for the, for all of us. I don't think we need a motion on it.
Any, anything we can do to to add value to our, to our children in my, in my favor, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right. And then, um, did everybody get the report from our maintenance supervisor? Okay, thank you very much, Bill. Okay. Anything else on unfinished new business? Okay, on to number fourteen, motions and resolutions. Amy, we will start with, uh, motion number one, please.
Move to authorize a seven percent increase in grade one of the Ross Common County twenty twenty-two wage scale as recommended by the Wage and Salary Committee.
Two moves, Chair.
Second.
Motion is made by Commissioner Milburn, seconded by Commissioner Muckenthaler to authorize a seven-priced increase to grade one of the Ross Common County wage scale as recommended by the Wage and Salary Committee. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Russo.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, motion two, please.
Move to approve the lead juvenile probation officer salary at grade six per Ross, per the Ross Common County twenty twenty-two wage scale as recommended by the Wage and Salary Committee.
I'll make, Chair, I'll second it. Motion is made by Commissioner Milburn, seconded by Commissioner Schneider to approve the lead juvenile probation officer salary at a grade six for the Ross Common County wage twenty-two, twenty twenty-two wage scales recommended by the Wage and for the Roscommon County wage 22, 2022 wage scales recommended by the Wage and Salary Committee. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Muckenthaler?
Yes.
Melbourne?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion three, please.
Move to adopt resolution number 2022 dash 07 dash 01. Resolution in support of 2022 airport project under block grant funding. Whereas the Roscommon County Blodgett Memorial Airport has been approved for a block grant contract with the Michigan Department of Transportation, MDOT, for the purpose of contracting with a consultation, consult for rehabilitation of a terminal apron and for construction of the terminal apron. And whereas the total proposed design project costs are an estimated at 40,000, of which the full 40,000 is eligible for federal grant funding. And whereas the total proposed construction costs will be determined through a design project and the county portion will be capped at 5% of the total project. And whereas the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners believes that the proposed design project and subsequent construction project are fully supportive of the community's growth and development. Now therefore be it resolved that the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners fully authorizes and supports the acceptance of the MDOT contract for the federal, state, local airport project under the block grant program for both design and construction of the airport apron as presented by airport manager. Sorry.
So move.
Second.
By Commissioner Russo, seconded by Commissioner Melbourne. Adopt resolution number 2022 dash 07 dash 01. Resolution supportive of 2022 airport project under block grant funding. Any further discussion from any commissioner? Hearing or seeing none, yes, sir.
Probably should use as a clarification, probably put Eric Cheroch instead of just Cheroch. Just a point of clarification for future. Is I even our clerk when was on, so yeah, just add Eric in there. So Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay, motion was made and seconded with the aforementioned addition of Eric's first name. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Russo?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Muckenthaler?
Yes.
Melbourne?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, motion four, please.
Move to adopt resolution number 2022 dash 07 dash 02. Resolution identifying authorized signer. Whereas the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners recognizes the need to clearly identify an authorized signer for the purpose of acceptance of all federal and state block grant agreements. And whereas the state of Michigan recognizes the chairman, chairperson of the Board of Commissioners serving as the chief executive officer for the county. And now therefore be it resolved that the individuals serving as the role of the Roscommon County or chairperson be identified as the duly authorized signatory on behalf of Roscommon County.
I'll make the motion. I'll second that.
Motion is made by Commissioner Muckenthaler, seconded by Commissioner Russo to adopt resolution 2020, 2022 dash 07 plus two. Resolution identifies authorizing signer. That's pretty wordy, so I'm not going to re-read it. Any further comment from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Muckenthaler?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Melbourne?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, motion number five, please.
Move to improve the settle agreement reached at mediation in the case of mock versus Roscommon at all. Case number one, 19 dash CV dash 13053 dash PBD dash PTM.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Motion is made by Commissioner Melbourne, seconded by Commissioner Russo to approve the settlement agreement in regards to mediation case of mock versus Roscommon County. Further discussion from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Russo?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Melbourne?
Yes.
Muckenthaler?
Yes.
Thank you, Amy. Take a drink of water. Okay, committee reports. Go ahead.
Now I have a couple of things, claims and accounts and agenda. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Melbourne?
District Kells, two economic development meetings. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Commissioner Muckenthaler, I had NMRE on Monday, the 11th and claims and accounts.
Okay. On the 27th, I had the audit exit interview with Anderson, Cadillac, Mental Health Meeting with Jody, myself and the undersheriff. On the 7th, I had the agenda meeting. Well, first I had the EDC Tourism Grant Meetings, Special Meeting where we awarded that money. And then we had the agenda meeting. And then at one o'clock, I did have a meeting with at Carter Woods Association. We did firm up where the lake level gauge is going to be permanently anchored at St. Helens. So that's all, everything's good. The association's great with it. We're happy, everybody has worked out great. So that'll be done by USGA and maybe this week or next week. So all I got. Item 16, any other public comment at this time, please? Yes, undersheriff.
I just want to thank you for your approval of motion number one. I don't know how aware you are of the wage and salary committee, but you have a whole bunch of really good people on that committee. Noel heads it. We are both on it. That process that we go through in classifying our recommendations to this board is pretty extensive. Everybody that's on that committee from many offices around the county has homework to do, questionnaire for every position that they fill out themselves, classify that person. Everybody brings their own recommendations together, then after that homework is done and tries to come up with what's fair. And I think we have a really good group that does that. Those level one positions have been an issue, I would say for a year or two at least and have been a very big concern in wage and salary. I, I hope this helps to relieve some of that on those employees, but also those hiring agencies trying to find good employees to fill those positions. But I thank you for passing that motion and for considering the recommendations of the wage and salary committee. Because there are a lot of good people that put a lot of thought into that and try to be as fair as possible when we are trying to help different departments out with their, their issues that they have there. And that was, has been one of our main concerns for a long time.
I think that way, that's one of the best things we've done is to establish that committee. And that's, that's a committee of 12?
Is it waiters?
Or nine this year? Okay, but anyway, I, probably something that should have been a long time ago.
I, I think.
I commend them for the job that they do, and I do know that they do a good job.
I think it functions well and the people that are on it now take it seriously. So and I, I thank you for passing that motion.
All right. Any other public comment at this time, please? Anybody out there? Nope. Going once, going twice, going three times.
Mr. Chair.
Second.
Item number 17, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.